Council ordered the February 12th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'd ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved?
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And this is item 2.1 on our agenda. The presentation of a proclamation to Ryan Andrew Birch honoring his act of heroism in our community. And I would invite Mr. Birch. And if Hospital Chief Robert Sims is here, or Lisa Terry, or anyone else. Chief, I see you're here. You can come on up here too. Come on up to the podium. It's an honor to play.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Good seeing you, Chief. So, for those of you who don't know, there was a terrible situation, and this young man put his life in jeopardy to save others. And what could have been a tragedy in our community turned out to be just an incident without anyone getting hurt. And our community owes him a huge, huge debt of gratitude. And we're grateful that we're not on national news, and we're not reading about this, hearing about this, worrying about injured people or hurt people. And we're just unbelievably grateful for what you've done. And I'd like to read a proclamation recognizing what you've done. Recognizing Ryan Andrew Birch for his heroism. Whereas, the town of Cary is honored to pay tribute to Ryan Andrew Birch, Facility Operation Coordinator for UNC Wellness Center in Cary, North Carolina, who personifies the true meaning of hero, and whose decisive actions and genuine commitment to the welfare of others is a source of inspiration to everyone. Whereas, on January 1st, 2015, Ryan Birch was on duty inside the UNC Wellness Center at 350 Stonecroft Lane in Cary, North Carolina, when a staff member approached him to say she had just interacted with a man carrying a gun. Mr. Birch, without hesitation or concern for his own personal safety, went to the location where the subject was last seen. He observed a man with a rifle attempting to gain entry into a building by using a card reader at an exterior door. Once Mr. Birch confirmed the threat posed by the subject, he immediately followed UNC Wellness Center emergency protocol, moved citizens to safe locations, and notified the Cary Police Department. And whereas, Mr. Birch's heroic and selfless acts were instrumental in helping to secure 57 Wellness Center members and staff to safety. Mr. Birch was also able to provide continued support to the Cary Police Department that resulted in a rapid apprehension of the subject and without injury to any of the parties involved. Now therefore, I, Harold Weinberg, Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, North Carolina, and on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby recognize Ryan Andrew Birch as a true hero in Cary. We thank him for being an outstanding leader and for his commitment to saving the lives of others, proclaiming this 12th day of February, 2015. Ryan? I would love to hear anything you have to say.
Really, the only thing that I have to say is I really would like to thank all of UNC Healthcare System for everything that they've done as far as providing safety for the Wellness Center. They've gone beyond, really trying to make it a safer place to work at. And then really to the Town of Cary and really the Police Department for their actions. They ensured me that all the police officers in the area were there. And when I went out there, I don't even know how many police officers were there. So, there was a lot. So, just want to thank really all of the Town of Cary and UNC Healthcare.
Thank you. Now, I'll call on Ms. Bush to do another proclamation.
And while I make my way to the podium, could the two Eans, Ian Henchaw and Enes Le, meet me at the podium? He'll figure it out. You're not that much taller than me. Well, thank you all for giving us a moment to celebrate technology. We've been celebrating technology for a couple of weeks now with the great announcement by Google Fiber that they're coming to our area. I don't know if everyone recognizes this, but out of the 11 cities that Google Fiber announced, eight of those were in North Carolina, and Cary was one of them. So, in the continuation of that great announcement, we have several groups within the Town of Cary who have been actively promoting technology. And they've done this on their own, with some help from town staff, with the incredible passion of Cary citizens. And they're about to start the Third Triangle Open Data Day in Cary. And so, I'll be reading that proclamation. Recognizing February 21st, 2015, as the Third Triangle Open Data Day in Cary, whereas the Town of Cary is committed to open government and using technology to foster open, transparent, and accessible government by making public data accessible and fostering and encouraging civic engagement. Whereas, open data refers to data generated by public sector entities that is legally accessible and available electronically to the public for their use. The Town of Cary encourages the community to develop software applications and tools to collect, organize, and share public data in new and innovative ways. And these ways that benefit citizens and government in the areas of economic development, commerce, and civic engagement. Whereas, the Information Services Advisory Board, the ISAB, is a group of Cary citizens appointed by the Town Council to advise them about ongoing, open, effective, multilateral communications with Cary citizens and other publics through idea generation and implementation in traditional and innovative media, including new and emerging technologies. The ISAB continues to work on promoting open data and getting more people involved in this initiative. Whereas Cary's first official Open Data Day was celebrated in 2013, this year, the effort and reach has grown, and the event is a triangle-wide celebration showcasing the benefits of regional collaboration. The 2015 event focuses on three primary topics: open data education, hacking for a civic good, and uniting the triangle through data. Now therefore, Harold Weinberg, Mayor of the Town of Cary, and the rest of Town Council, do hereby proclaim February 21st, 2015, as the Third Triangle Open Data Day in Cary. And I encourage everyone, our citizens and members of our business community, to get involved and learn more about this emerging technology and its remarkable positive investment impact on our citizens, community, and government.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and especially Councilwoman Lori Bush, we appreciate the support the town has given over the past several years on Open Data Day. You know, a couple of years ago, we came out of the Technology Task Force, and open data was this really big thing. And so, we started an event. We hoped that a couple of people would come and it would be successful. Well, first year was 80 people, second year was 300 people.
Wow.
And right now, we have over 200 people signed up. Go to TriangleOpenDataDay.org, and there's a lot of different activities that will be done. But this year, we're spending a lot of time on the hackathons, so this is where citizens will actually be working with the open data. There's so much data now with Raleigh's program, Durham's got a program coming on, Wake County's got a program, and Cary's going to have a program, I believe. So, actually using that data and showing the municipalities how it can be used for good. So, again, thank you for your support, and I encourage you all to come out to Triangle Open Data Day.
Thank you, Ms. Henchaw.
See you later.
We now move to our... Wait a minute. Move to Public Speaks Out. I almost skipped that. We don't want to do that. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. Excuse me. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers will have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit, and I'll be strict to the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. And there is a one-hour time limit for overall for Public Speaks Out. There's a timer located on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the time expires, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light. And at that time, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair, I'm going to interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit, and ask that all groups, if you have a group, please allow one spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group, and please reduce repetitive comments. And I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. Please understand, last time, we had a little confusion. If you want to speak to the council, now's the forum for speaking to the council unless it's a public hearing. And we only have one public hearing tonight, and that public hearing is on an annexation petition for Cary Creek Limited Partnership. So if you want to speak on anything else, this is the forum to do it. So having said that, now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and anyone who would like to speak on anything except for a public hearing, I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Terry Heath. I live at 919 Old Thompson Creek Road in Apex, which is a Chatham County address. On January 28th, at the public hearing here, the Purse property was on the agenda requesting to be zoned residential 40 conditional use. 29 acres of that property is in Chatham County, 44 acres is in Wake County. The map that I've presented on the very bottom, highlighted in green, I believe I used, shows the point of displeasure that I'm going to speak tonight about. That night on the 28th, I expressed dissatisfaction, finding that a road would connect two parcels that adjoin my property, the Wood Hall subdivision with 128 units, with the Purse property. The Wood Hall plans are currently in the town for review. They show a road that connects the two subdivisions. Tonight, with new information, I am going to speak on behalf of 20 Thompson Creek homeowners who have signed a petition against this road that connects at the Southern Point. Little after the meeting on the 28th, I got an email from Michael Grattis, who works in planning. And he stated that the plan, the Wood Hall subdivision plan, appears to be meeting all acceptable town requirements at the present time. Thus, it's on its course for administrative approval. Secondly, since that meeting, Jerry Jensen, in an email, said roughly 1,300 vehicles would pass through a road that has 130 units in a subdivision. This is going to connect two subdivisions. Yes, I know there will be other entries and exits. That's still going to be heavily trafficked. Roy Mashburn was willing to give us a buffer. We found out that the buffer can be built on, and a road can go through the buffer, which will be 10 feet from my back property line. Question to the council: How does this preserve the rural character of the area, which we were promised with the joint land use Cary and Chatham? How does it protect the property rights of the residents? And finally, the question I have is if the developer, Roy Mashburn, were to request relief from the requirements, would he then be able to present his plans to the council as opposed to going through Cary Planning?
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Thank you. If you have additional comments, please leave them with the town clerk, or you may send them to us, and we'd be glad to help you answer questions that you have. Contact you in any way.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity here to speak. My name is Umar Khan, and I live on 932 Bentbury Way in the Prescott Community. I'm here to talk about the rezoning application for the Keller properties. I know we have talked about a lot of things regarding this. The only two topics I would like to talk about is the safety and the density. Now, they are directly proportional to each other, so that's why density is very important. Because if we look at the picture here, which is the crossing of Piney Plains and the Stephens Road that the handout I gave, that is a very narrow road. That crossing is very narrow, and it is just not capable to handle all the traffic that's going to come with this development. And also, I'll appreciate if we look into the bigger picture of all the developments that are coming here. It's not just the 70, which are now 70, 70 townhomes. There's 19 single-family homes, and then there's the farmland right next to it, which is also being talked about, building homes there. So, basically, the infrastructure is not there, and there's no... It's not possible to handle all this traffic at the crossing. I understand the builder, Mr. Chadwick, has talked about increasing, widening this, which road is it? Stephens Road, but it's not at the crossing. It's only in front of the development. And I understand that's by law, it cannot be forced, or it cannot be enforced. But, so that's why density is important. If we decrease the density, at least that would decrease the congestion at that intersection. And if somehow we can have that intersection increase, maybe the other property that's being planned on the corner, that might help with the traffic. And so, basically, that's pretty much it. I know I have limited time. I didn't even use my three minutes. But it's very simple and clear that the problem is with the traffic and at the intersection, and that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Magna Patel. I live on 928 Bentbury Way, Prescott Community. And as you can see, it is clearly a very important issue for all of us. There are a few other members from our community over here, and I'm here to talk about the Keller rezoning. As a concerned mother of two young kids, and like he said, I'm going to reiterate that if you're rezoning just the property, please rezone the whole area, because all the new development is affecting, and the traffic on that intersection cannot take it. I feel that the safety of young kids is not met, because right now, there is a school bus stop at the intersection of Piney and Stephens. And with the volume and increase currently, the approval of 70 townhomes for Keller properties, I feel is a little bit too much for that street to handle the traffic. Our community plus that community, Stephens is a very tiny road, and I don't think it's equipped to handle that kind of traffic. Plus, kids will be waiting for the school bus stop on the intersection of Stephens and Piney, which with this much traffic, I feel it creates a very unsafe area for them. So, if y'all can revisit and decrease the density of the number of townhomes, and if you're agreeing to 70 homes right now, I think it's setting precedence for other developments coming in the surrounding area. So, the volume of the area in general would increase. That would increase the traffic. So, just widening a street at a certain point is not going to... And it's a stop sign over there. It's not a stoplight. So, I don't think that road or the area is equipped to handle so much of volume of traffic. So, in general, I would like to see if you can please review it again. And I strongly urge you guys to reduce the number of density for the townhomes to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, the council does not control the proposal, nor can we make recommendations. The applicant has to make those recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jonathan Jackson, and I also want to comment on the Keller property rezoning. I lived next door to the applicant, Michael Dean Chadwick, for the last 10 years, and so I can tell you firsthand, he's a man of integrity. And I know that he is deeply committed to our community. Professionally, I'm a certified financial planner, so I do try to pay attention to things that will impact our local economy, which is why when Mr. Chadwick mentioned the project that he was working on, I began to think about a lot of the benefits that I see to this project. And the first one I'll mention would be the jobs it will create. There are... This group probably knows this already, but there are government studies that suggest that each residential permit can have the potential to create hundreds of jobs due to the housing multiplier effect. And so, the most obvious jobs that this project would create are going to be the actual construction workers themselves that you see out there on the job site, building the homes. But there are other jobs in those construction companies too, even though they may not be on the job site themselves. They might be office workers back at the office, accountants, and so on. The second wave of job creation that I would see would be in companies that support or supply the construction companies. So this could be perhaps building material suppliers, cabinet manufacturers, architectural firms, engineering firms, trucking companies, and so on. And then, once the construction phase is completed, now you've got the 70 or 80, or whatever the number ends up being, households moving into these units. And when these households spend their disposable income in local businesses, this creates jobs in those local businesses as they expand to serve these new households. We've also got revenue that I see as a benefit. I think the total cost of this project is maybe in the $14 million to $15 million range, and then they're going to get sold for maybe $20 million to $25 million. So you've got a good amount of revenue adding to the tax base and the local economy. I think you'd also have some, maybe a half a million dollars roughly or so, in various fees to the Town of Cary, whether it's things like building permits, development, parking wreck fees, and so on, not to mention the real estate taxes that will be paid year after year on these new homes. And then finally, I think this project gives us an opportunity to reduce the impacts of urban sprawl. The negative impacts of urban sprawl are well documented, and there are some towns and cities in other parts of the country that are taking deliberate steps to reduce the negative impacts of urban sprawl. Understandably, the topic of density has come up tonight and in some of the past meetings, and I get that. I do think you can make an argument that there would be benefits to increasing the density. When you think about all the commercial development in and around the crossroads area, we would have a nice opportunity to potentially increase the density here, thereby reducing some of the negative impacts that you could have from urban sprawl. So as a Town of Cary citizen for the last 10 years and many more to come, I'm thankful that there are people out there like Mr. Chadwick that are willing to take business risks to better our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm glad to be in front of you all again. I sent you all an email earlier.
You state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know me. My name is Ruth Merkel, and I live at 105 Victoria Station Court. That's in the Wellington Park subdivision. And I too am here to talk about the Keller property. And I have sent you an email earlier, so I'm not going to read that all of it back to you, but I do want to highlight a few key points of what I've been trying to bring across. Number one being, we do need more housing choices for seniors in South Cary. Most of senior housing communities are located on the other end of Cary. Seastone, Carolina Preserve, Heritage Pine, building some housing here will provide more choices for seniors when they come into Cary. As well, as a mother of three adult children who are now living in apartments, they're looking to buy a home in the near future, but they want to stay in Cary, but they're not ready to buy a single-family home. I think my... Is it still working? Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Still working. I'll adjust to you. Don't worry about it.
You will... If you... If these houses could be built, you will keep them and their money in Cary. If you can provide my adult children, other young professionals, housing options such as these, that will fit their budgets and their lifestyles. Plus, they love the convenience that this area provides, which brings me my next point. This is an ideal location because it's proximity to major roads, a hospital, healthcare facility, shopping centers, restaurants, and there's also a TTA bus stop right on Tryon Road. So it's very convenient, again, for seniors, very convenient for young professionals. I have to admit, the developer who I've been talking to, and he's been talking to, as many people who will listen to him and work with him, has agreed to put in some improvements that really should enhance the neighborhood, such as a community gathering place, a sidewalk along Stephens Road. He's even offered to put in a bus stop for the children. He wants to put in additional curbs, gutters, storm drains, and more importantly, for those who have problems with stormwater runoff, some state-of-the-art retention ponds. The density has been lowered since the plan was first introduced, but the quality of the homes will still remain. And last thing, and Mr. Jackson, I think his name is, mentioned this. The developer is local. He lives in Cary. He will hire local contractors who will provide jobs for builders, carpenters, roofers, landscapers, and they in turn will shop in our local stores, our shops, our restaurants, all which will help our economy. And the final point I want to make is the Planning and Zoning Board understood the potential benefits of this proposed development, and they approved it by a vote of seven to one. So I hope you will consider and do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Merkel. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kerry Gramsche, and I live in the Tryon Villas community, just off Tryon Manor Road and south of the proposed Dillinger project. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. On October 16th, 2014, along with two other Tryon Villas representatives, I had the pleasure of addressing the council regarding the proposed Dillinger project and the request by the applicant to change the comprehensive plan and the rezoning of Track Five of the Dillinger PDD. Tonight, I'm again representing the Tryon Villas residents and homeowners association board of directors, of which I am a member. On October 16th, we made a statement in support of the applicant's proposal. On December 15th, at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, a representative from our community, acting in my absence, reversed our community's position by saying we no longer supported the applicant's proposal. This reversal was fully supported by our homeowners and the HOA board of directors. We believe it's important tonight to explain to the council the reason for changing our position. We did not have an issue with the development on Tracks Three and Four of the Dillinger PDD. Our concern has always been Track Five, which borders on our property, and with the applicant's proposal, which requires the extension of Tryon Manor Road, which we believe is unnecessary. More importantly, what is and what has always been of great concern to us is the manner of access to Track Five off of the extension of Tryon Manor Road. We have never received satisfactory information from the developer as to how a road would be constructed down that track, considering the significant elevation change. Our concern is that any access close to our homes, which is what was proposed, would change the topography to the extent that it would have adverse impact on our, on the entire Tryon Villas community. To our knowledge, neither the Town of Cary staff nor the developer has studied this potential issue and determined its feasibility. All things considered, therefore, we have decided not to support the proposal, so I wanted to explain our reversal. Going forward, the Tryon Villas Board anticipates returning to address the town council when other changes to the comprehensive plan that impact Tryon Villas are being considered. For example, an applicant may request to take Track Five and change the comprehensive plan and the rezoning of that parcel of the Dillinger PDD, so it is zoned exactly the same as Tracks Three and Four, therefore mostly commercial.
Mr. Gramsche, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired.
Okay. You have the-
Provide your comments, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joel Frybaum. I reside at 118 Arabella Court, and I am a director with the Tryon Villas HOA. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the council. And although this particular issue is not up for consideration this evening, it is connected directly to the development of the Dillinger PDD. The issue is the planned extension of Tryon Manor Road as part of the development of the Dillinger PDD and currently exists in the town's major transportation plan. Many in my community do not understand the logic behind this being a connector road. Other than possible access into a developed Track Five of the Dillinger PDD, the road connects little of anything, and there are already several alternatives from getting to Point A to Point B on Tryon Road. If you look at the map that I've attached to this presentation, okay, I've identified Point A and Point B, Point A being on Walnut up by Crossroads, and Point B on Tryon Road. If you look at the map I have provided, you can see the current roads connecting Point A and B, along with proposed addition and the existing development along these roads. Most of these are points of destination, okay? People don't go to these places unless they have a specific task in mind. Currently, you can only make a right-hand turn off Piney Plains onto Walnut at the north end of the road, and you can only do the same when turning off Tryon Manor onto Tryon at the southern end of the road. Given the town's and the owner's desire to see the property develop, it becomes economically more feasible to develop the land if a costly and unnecessary road extension is not part of the developer's cost. As Gary Garmisch mentioned in his presentation, it's conceivable that Track Five can be accessed without an extension to Tryon Manor Road, or as others have mentioned in the past, maybe Track Five should never be developed. Although it's not for tonight, I would ask the council to seriously consider the town's long-term transportation plan and the option of removing the Tryon Manor extension as part of that plan. I again thank you for your time this evening, and I sincerely appreciate all you do for the Tryon Villas, the dedicated work you are doing to serve our fine town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is John Love. I'm an attorney with Jordan Price Law Firm in Raleigh, and I am here on behalf of Kurt Dillinger and Carol Collins, who are the owners of approximately a 24-acre tract of land on Piney Plains Road. I have represented Mr. Dillinger and Ms. Collins in both business and personal matters for nearly eight years, and my clients have asked me to say a few words on their behalf in furtherance of the proposed amendment to the Dillinger PDD and rezoning of the Piney Plains Road tract. My clients consented to the rezoning of the property to office and institutional use back in the year 2000, and in the approximately 14 years since, there have been no offers to purchase the property for office and institutional use, despite it being listed with numerous brokers over the years. They have, however, been good stewards of the property by maintaining it and paying the higher property taxes associated with the O&amp;I zoning designation. They have located a buyer and have the property under contract, and this buyer, who is based out of Cary, desires to develop the property into a townhome community. As you know, however, the current PDD and zoning do not permit residential development of the property. The Dillingers have requested that the town amend the PDD and rezone the property as medium-density residential, and we believe there are several reasons why the property is more appropriately zoned as medium-density residential. As I previously indicated, the property has been available for sale for approximately 14 years with no offers to acquire it for O&amp;I use. And as set forth in an opinion from NAI Caro-Atlantic, there are numerous factors associated with the property, including geographic features, location, access, and competition from other O&amp;I parcels in the PDD, which render it undesirable, apparently, for O&amp;I use. And there's just an established lack of interest in this property for office and institutional use. Continuing to pay the property taxes and maintain the property has become increasingly burdensome for Mr. Dillinger and Ms. Collins, and there is apparently no end in sight if this property is not rezoned. While we understand the town's concern over the loss of office space within the Dillinger PDD, the subject property, although it is zoned for office and institutional use, substance over form, the property simply does not appear to be viable for O&amp;I use, and rezoning it to residential would not significantly reduce the supply of O&amp;I property in the PDD. So rather than just to remain as vacant land, the current buyer will develop the property and provide quality residences, as well as increase the town's tax base. So on account of the foregoing reasons, we respectfully request that the council approve the PDD amendment and also the rezoning of the property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, my name is Ian Henshaw, and I'm going to speak in support of Agenda Item 6.7, the consideration of a license agreement for downtown economic development. You know, you probably do know that I am the managing partner of Technology Tank. You may know that we've recently moved our offices into the Cary Innovation Center, taken on the role of management and direction of the activities of the Cary Innovation Center. And our goal really is to increase the support for entrepreneurism and innovation in Cary, in whatever shape, form that is. We're not in competition with anybody. We want to increase the pool of support organizations for entrepreneurism and innovation in the town. So you have three individuals here, David Gardner, Alex Odzinski, and Whitney Rowe, who are really well-known, really well-known in the startup and entrepreneurial community in, in the Triangle. And this is, this is like a home run for the Town of Cary, to bring people that caliber and open up a business incubator in what is really inspirational space over the theater is really the, I think, the correct decision for Cary to make. These people, their names alone, will bring a lot of people into downtown, and I think as part of the downtown redevelopment, that's one of the goals, is to bring people there. So as, as Chair of your technology task force, I know we had several recommendations that are along these lines, including making Cary a community-driven technology hub, and encouraging partners to adopt parking lot items, including economic development in terms of technology. And I think this fits both those recommendations. So with that, I would encourage your overwhelming support of Staff Report TM 15-012. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henshaw. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is John Woodliffe. I reside at 105 Lynn-Vilvera Road. I am, I'm the engineer working with the applicant on the Calery property rezoning, and I would like to address some of the fundamental questions that you all will be considering tonight as you deliberate this case. I think the most salient question is regarding the proposed land use appropriate for this parcel. The applicant has proposed 70 single-family attached townhome units for an equivalent gross density of 5.2 units per acre. The Southeast Area Plan, which governs this site, identifies this property as medium-density residential with a proposed density of 38 units per acre, as you all know. And this was, and this parcel was, was identified to act as a transition from the higher density or higher intensity office and institutional to the east and the medium-density residential to the south, which would be south of Stevens Road. Based on my experience in land use planning, I believe this site is eminently suitable for single-family attached townhome units, given that this proposed rezoning reflects the medium-density land use that was envisioned by the Southeast Area Plan, and given the appropriate transition that this project will provide between the single-family community south of this project and the higher-intensity office and institutional zoning directly to the east of this property. More importantly, the physical attributes of this site are exceedingly conducive to single-family attached townhome units. This site is broken into two pods that are distinct pods. One pod is devoted to an existing transmission line easement, and part of that pod, the remainder of that pod, is devoted to single fam, or to a stormwater management facility, which we have oversized to accommodate the 25-year storm. The second pod, which is devoted to the 70 townhome units, is much smaller, and this physical reality is a key point that I believe you should be, should be an important consideration to reinforce the highest and best use of this site as a townhome community. The developer pod acts kind of as a unique opportunity to cluster the proposed residential units in a compact configuration that capitalizes on the advantages of cluster development by reducing overall impervious surface and reducing utilities, infrastructure, and opening up the site for much-desired open space to achieve public active and passive open space, exceeding the amount that is required by the Town of Cary. I hope you will consider these points as you deliberate the merits of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. I'm John Shaw. I'm here on behalf of myself and Citizens for Cary's Feature Incorporated. And the reason I'm speaking to you is I want to urge you to approve 14 CPA 06, the ARM property that'll come before you tonight, and particularly to remove that property from the Cornerstone Activity Center. There have been many things said by a few people about if you do that, you will reduce or eliminate the chance of a future use of that property as very intense office development. However, when you consider the history of that intersection near there and the traffic in that area, you'll realize that any future development in intense office use is simply unrealistic. So I urge you to approve the CAC, CPA 06. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next speaker, please.
I'm Monti Maney. I live at 2416 Stevens Road. I'm here in support of the Calery project rezoning. I've lived there for over 35 years, and when I first moved there, I had a Raleigh address, same house. My address became a Cary address, but we weren't in the Town of Cary. And then in the late 90s, we went through a whole lot of turmoil with that project at that end of town, and, and we fortunately ended up, it was part of an involuntary annexation, but we're all real happy now that we're part of the Town of Cary. I attended a meeting in December, the Town of Cary Planning and Zoning Board Public Hearing December 15th, and I'm going to read to you, which I normally don't like to do, but the following public comments on the Calery zoning were made by the chairman of Planning and Rezoning, Alan Swannstrom, and he summarized his thoughts on, on medium-density residential and why it is in the comprehensive plan. He said, "We have higher density closer to activity because it puts more people close to where they shop and work, tapering densities back from there. It is likely that this is about as close to transitional as you can get. If looking for transitional, transition from single-family to office, medium-density is what you pick." Over 10 years ago, he said, when we did the Southeast Area Comprehensive Plan, we envisioned that this kind of thing was going on. Back when we did this comprehensive plan, which was our roadmap, we were not thinking single-family residential. We were thinking townhomes or higher density. So even though it may feel uncomfortable now, he said, in terms of the master plan we developed years ago, it's a pretty good fit. He continued to say, "I think the development of this property is going to improve some of the traffic issues. Obviously, it's not going to fix everything because of properties in between and further along Stevens Road that aren't going to be improved yet, but I do think this will at least fix part of it. And so frankly," he said, "I don't think the traffic is going to be rendered much worse. I like the developer effort to work with the neighbors, and I frankly wish we saw more of this. I appreciate the fact that we are going to mitigate a little of the stormwater or impervious surface runoff from the road." End of his statement. The Planning and Zoning Board approved the Calery property rezoning, and I encourage you to do it tonight as well. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. I'm Michael Crane. I'm at 1728 Callendale Avenue, which is a side street off of Stevens Road. Let's just visualize Stevens Road, Stevens Road from Piney Plain to the end of, to the circle. It's a small, two-lane, unmarked road with small houses on the side, and with this current development, you know, the roads will be widened, and then each development that's going to be piecemeal on Stevens Road will also widen the roads. So over time, if the entire Stevens Road area is not developed, it's going to look like a continuous hourglass-type road. Widen road, back to narrower, you know, state, and then to the widened road again, and then back to the- back to the normal state of the road that it is now. And I hope many of you have actually ridden down Stevens Road and know where it is, where, you know, 70 townhomes, cars coming in and out, the traffic, you know, will be widened. That road, Stevens Road, will be widened, but then it's going to narrow again to where it meets Piney Plain Road. And this development is not like the development at Dillinger Property or like Creekside at Tryon Road, where the access is to major four-lane-type infrastructure roads leading in and out to that development. I'm not against development, because I know sooner or later Stevens Road will be developed. But I'm just more for a more, smaller-density development that fits that area of Cary. I mean, that's why some of us moved to that area, because it's still in Cary, but it still gives you the feel of being in the country. I mean, that part of Piney Plain Road from about Walnut Street to Tryon Road, there's no streetlights on Piney Plain Road. It's a four-lane road, but at nighttime, it feels like you're in the country. And we'd like that feel. But yeah, we know sooner or later it will be developed, and we know that with that will be streetlights and traffic lights and so on. But I'm just more for a smaller development for Stevens Road. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm James Sinner. I live at 2317 Stevens Road. I'm actually across from one of the properties being developed for 19 houses by Mr. Chadwick. He's building three homes to the acre there, which is very understandable. But I don't understand why we need townhomes at the end of the street. There's enough townhomes across Piney Plains Road to fill up, I'm going to say, probably 50, 60 acres of them over there, and going to be more. We don't need them on our road. Stevens Road is not a high-density road. It's just not conceivable. I think three houses to the acre is great. I think that puts him in 39 homes. You still get the same output of labor. You still get the same spending ability. You still get the tax revenue, same, all the same. Also, there is a small inland wetlands on the property. I've heard no tales of anyone getting a permit to build around that property. I presume, and I do know that you do have to have a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to build close to that wetlands. There's no gain for us on Stevens Road to have townhomes. There's nothing there for us. It's just going to bring our property value down. It's not going to help the city of Cary any. It's not going to help the little communities, to remain communities in Cary. We're wiping them out. You're taking them away. There's no more little communities anymore. We're going to make them great big communities and overpopulate the area. Schools ain't going to be able to handle it. Our roads can't handle it. I don't understand why they're doing it at all. I'm simply up here saying that R12 is plenty big for that lot up there, 13 acres, 39 homes, beautiful place for it with a nice wetland. It's just not made for townhomes. And now they're talking about putting more townhomes on the industry, as a man spoke earlier today, trying to get his rezoned to townhomes. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Linda Brown, and I live in Preswick. And I'm here to petition the development of the townhomes across from our neighborhood. I live about three homes within the subdivision, so anything that happens across the street would affect my property. I'm sure every developer that comes before you will tell you what they're going to do to prevent runoff in a neighborhood. I'm sure my developer did the same thing. But I do have runoff in my backyard, which does affect my property value. If you continue to cut down trees, nature tells you when you are imbalanced. So if we continue cutting down trees, putting up homes, and destroying the nature around us, then we're going to have to start paying then to do the abatement that you need to correct it. So I'm asking you to think about that small little neighborhood, one little street. I've been told that it will be connected to Wellington. You're going to put all these people here, connected, you're going to have a lot of foot traffic. And I think the more development you do in that area, it's going to affect all the people in that area. I'm told there's runoff in Wellington, there's runoff still in Preswick. And even though they're building and want to do stormwater control, I'm sure any other development there will affect all the neighbors in that neighborhood. So if you could consider that as you think about the development, I think that would help us a lot.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I live at 2416 Stevens Road. I graduated from the old Cary High School. I have lived on Stevens Road over 40-some years. I did not protest Wellington. I did not protest any of the apartments that have been built on Tryon Road. I did not protest any of the others, and I'm not protesting this. The reason why is because Cary's going to grow. And the main reason, I think, is that, you know, we need neighbors. You need neighbors. And you need neighbors that get along. And I think it's sad that it has come to this and about how much you can build and how much you can't, because a lot of this is not even under y'all's control. It's under the building codes of Cary, not you personally who are going to decide this about the streets and that type of thing. And I think there's a thing called watching Cary grow or something like that, that maybe these, some of the people need to look into. But anyway, my main thing is, is that I enjoy watching the people in Preswick walk their little dogs, especially the little Beagle and the other little Beagle. When, our neighborhood is a fine neighborhood. We're good people. When we had the hurricane and we didn't have any water, and we were one of the last ones to get it, we, at my house, emptied our pool and took water to different people so they could flush their toilets. And that's the type of neighborhood I think we want. And I think the townhouses are better than having single homes, and I am 100% in favor of it. And I think that the people should be aware that there's more land on Stevens Road to be developed too at some point in time, hopefully about 20 years from now when I'm six feet under, but whatever. It's still going to happen, and I don't object to it. And I thank y'all, and I thank you for your time. And maybe I'll see you in two more weeks. I don't know. Now, wait a minute, I have one more thing. But this is not my three minutes. This is from Mr. and Mrs. Alton and Enza Cornegy. They live at, on Stevens Road, and they have lived there for over 52 years. And it says, "We have lived on Stevens Road for over 52 years. We plan that Mr. Michael, we understand that Mr. Michael Chadwick plans to build a townhome community on the Keller land. We are pleased to support this neighborhood addition, and we know it will be an asset to this side of Cary." So that's all, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Heather Connolly, and I live at 1708 Calandell Avenue, which is on the Stevens Roads where the Keller property is being talked about tonight. And I think my husband and I, we've sent emails to each of the council members. But I think our main concern is if we put 70 townhomes on a road and we don't improve the basic infrastructure of the road, we're doing a disservice to everybody. We're doing a disservice to the 70 new townhome residents that are going to go in there. We're doing a disservice to the Preswick community. We're going to do a disservice to the Wellington community that's getting a connection on the Stevens Road, because all of us are going to end up sitting on Stevens Road in traffic at some point. All of us are going to end up sitting, trying to get onto Piney Plains for multiple minutes plus in the mornings, trying to make that turn. And it's just not a transition area, like when we look at the Dillinger Property, that actually comes out onto Piney Plains, that gives you that transition and that area and the road and infrastructure should support it. I mean, we've had neighbors negotiating for sidewalks and dropping protest petitions because they think, well, we might get a little more sidewalk on the road. And we shouldn't be negotiating over sidewalks and basic infrastructure. We should be providing that to community members and making sure that that's there as we're doing that development. And I understand Mr. Chadwick is bound to do the improvements along his properties, and that's what the code requires, and that's great. But we will have an accordion effect along Stevens Road of a developed, an improved road to non-developed, non-improved road. And that's the main concern. If Mr. Chadwick was proposing single-family homes with a density that could be supported on Stevens Road, I'd be his biggest cheerleader. I'd be up here supporting him. But that's not what we're looking at. And we're looking at, you know, increasing our density on a road that just doesn't have the infrastructure to support it at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Michael Dean Chadwick. I reside at 208, excuse me, Oxford Mill Court. I was asked to read this from Mr. Golden, who is president of the Homeowners Association. However, this is from him personally. And he says, "To whom it may concern, over the past months, I have met, I am William Golden at 940 Bentbury Way, whose family is most affected by the new construction, and have met with Mr. Dean on numerous occasions. We went over different concerns, concerns and questions. Mr. Dean has assured me that he would work hard to help and considered all our concerns, excuse me, that may arise going forward. After many proposed changes such as reduced number of homes, the entrance where it would line up with Bentbury, and a few other things along Smithfield Road, Stevens Road, his promise to improve the landscaping and the fencing and the sidewalks have led me to drop my personal protest petition against the Keller property. I do believe that Mr. Dean will do what he has said he will do to make all of this There's 270 acres that drain above the Keller track, come through the Keller track, down past Preswick, and on into Wellington, with very little stopping them until you get down to the Wellington pond, which clearly gets more than its share of water, more than it was designed. And so to, that was one of the first concerns we had and heard about. I addressed those concerns by doubling the size of our stormwater pond that will greatly impact not only Preswick, but will greatly impact Wellington as well in a positive way. We also looked at how else could we possibly slow even more water. We went across the street and said, hey, what if we put a stormwater catch basin in front of their catch basin and bring their water back to us and take it the other way? How much more that would increase our water because we could provide for it and decrease the water that they were experiencing. Talk about the school buses and buses turning around and everything. With the subdivision being built, buses won't have to turn around. They'll be able to drive through. But we've offered to build a school bus stop. And with Forest Park being built right down Stevens Road, just a few hundred yards, it will now tie into Wellington. And so people will now have the option to go one of two different directions that currently today doesn't exist. I would vote the council, ask the council to vote in favor of this. We've worked very hard. I did some figuring the other day. Somewhere between 30 and 40 hours, I've met with citizens in meetings, and it's worked out that every hour cost me one unit. So we went from 120 down to 70. So I don't want to meet anybody else. But I do thank the neighbors for their attitude, their help. It's been contentious at times, but it's always been trying to come out with the very best plan we could. And I am convinced that we have done that, and I hope you will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for public speaks out? Anyone at all? I see no one, so we'll close. Public speaks out. And we now move to consent agenda. Consent in the portion of tonight's meeting, item four. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Honored-initiated annexation petitions, 14A18 Darlington Advisors LLC, 14A20 Williams Yate Airs, 14A22 Highcroft Investors LLC, and 14A24 Habitat for Humanity. Revocation of grants of easements, revocation of conveyances of right-ofways, and dedication of right-ofway on town-owned properties. Resolution of intent to schedule a public hearing for the consideration of closure of portion of right-ofway on Kildare Farm Road. Would council members, like any of these items, pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings, which is item number five. The same rules apply for public hearings that apply for public speaks out with one exception. You now have five minutes to speak instead of three. We have one public hearing this evening, and that's Honored-initiated Annexation Petition, 14A23 Cary Creek Limited Partnership. And Mr. Nicholas of our staff will introduce the item, will open the public hearing, and council will not take any action this evening. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of .61 acres of property located at 4701 NC 55 Highway in the southwest corner of the intersection of NC 55 and NC 540. Request also includes 1.05 acres of additional adjacent right-ofway. The property is in Cary's ETJ, and it's currently zoned residential 40 and within the mixed-use overlay district. Request is associated with Site Plan 14 SP 47, which proposes a mix of residential and non-residential uses.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for Annexation 14A23, and I would invite the first speaker to our podium now. Anyone for this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. We have no action to take, and I thank you for your comments, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is item 6.1, Revenue Bond Resolution. Ms. Mills will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Mills.
Good evening, council. We're here tonight to take action necessary to sell up to $62.5 million of revenue bonds. We have approximately $43 million of utility capital projects, including the Cary Apex Water Treatment Plan expansion, that have been funded by revenue bonds. In addition to financing these capital projects, the town has the opportunity to refinance approximately $19 million in existing debt. Prior to the issuance of revenue bonds, town council is required to approve a bond order and authorize the execution and delivery of related documents. The staff report includes the recommended bond order necessary to proceed. In summary, the legal documents address council authorization, the sale process, terms and conditions, dollar values, and the pledge of utility revenues to pay the debt service. The annual debt service for this borrowing will be approximately $2.4 million per year over the 24-year life of the bonds. Council has planned for this commitment by adopting a fiscally prudent budgetary rate-smoothing strategy, which avoids a spike in our customers' utility rates. Interest rates are very low at this time, and coupled with the town's favorable AAA bond ratings, interest expense will be minimized, and this benefits our ratepayers for many years to come. As an offset to the debt service, if market conditions remain favorable, the town could realize approximately $2 million in future interest savings over the next 16 years by financing the existing revenue bonds. The staff recommends that council adopt the bond order this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Council members, questions, comments, or motion?
I'd just say, thank you, Karen. I mean, $2 million.
I mean, $2 million. Thank you. That's wonderful.
Great job.
We love you, Karen.
I'm glad you approved staff request.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you.
We now move to item 6.2, the Orem Property Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Ramich will present the item. Council may take action. Mr. Ramich.
Thank you and good evening. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for about 26 acres on High House Road. The site is on the north side of High House, immediately east of the Bradford mixed-use development, currently under construction. And east of the site is the Prestonwood planned unit development. This is an aerial view taken looking northward, dates from about 2013. To the north of the site is the Georgetown subdivision and to the south, you can see Seastone under construction. The site also contains a 180-foot tall cell tower that's located almost in the middle of the western property boundary of the site. According to Carey's GIS maps, there is a stream and floodplain that forms the northern boundary of the site. And according to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, High House Road and Davis Drives are both designated as major thoroughfares with four through lanes each. Nearby Bridle Creek Drive is designated as a collector road. At present, C-Trans fixed route service is provided along High House Road. The long-range service expansion plans for C-Trans envision future service along Davis Drive, about a quarter mile to the west of the site. Carey's townwide land use plan identifies the site as being part of the Cornerstone Mixed Use Community Activity Center. And according to the land use plan, future development of the site should generally improve the overall mix and balance between commercial office and residential uses within the center. The subject site is also the only remaining developable site within the Cornerstone Community Activity Center. Land use and transportation planning has been crafted in concert over time at this activity center. And this collaborative approach includes an internal circulation system anchored around a ring road, serving all four quadrants and shown by the blue dashed line on the map. This is supplemented by additional connecting roads, shown in the dashed purple lines. There are four signalized intersections, shown by the purple circles, that are intended to distribute trips away from the Davis and High House intersection in the center. Since two of the activity center quadrants are still currently under active construction, traffic patterns out here probably still require more time to settle out over the coming year before the town can really determine system utilization and the optimal flow of traffic. The applicant is requesting that Carey's land use plan be amended so that the site is removed from the Cornerstone Activity Center and then re-designated as Low Density Residential, or LDR. The LDR category includes single-family detached housing at densities of between one and three units per acre. The land use plan does provide recommended amounts of commercial office and housing development for activity centers. This slide shows the plan recommendations in that center gray column. And the yellow column on the far right shows the projected build-out conditions in the center exclusive of the subject parcel. The more notable finding concerns the proportional amount of office space in this activity center. Carey standards call for at least 30% of total non-residential space to be office and ideally at least 40%. Without the subject parcel, the center will fall below the 40% recommended figure. However, it'll still be above the recommended minimum. And as you know, work is currently underway to develop a new comprehensive plan for Carey. The future of office employment and economic development in Carey is one of the major topics that's currently being tackled. This slide shows one of the key changes that's going on both regionally and nationally in the office market. It's evolved considerably since the 1960s through the 1990s. Sites in mixed-use suburban office parks became popular in the last 20 years. Sites in mixed-use activity centers are capturing more of the trend in office movement currently. And you can see that in things like Research Triangle Park, where they are currently in the process and have adopted a new master plan where they're reinventing themselves for mixed-use office. Working in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce here, we're starting to develop a draft inventory map of undeveloped parcels that would be suitable for future office uses. This is the latest draft inventory of undeveloped parcels within activity centers in West Central Carey. The inventory depicted on the slide is particular to the market for mixed office, which we just spoke about. This map covers about 13 square miles. The Orem site, shown in the center with the star in deep blue, is the only site we identified as being a prime site for mixed office. The two sites colored pale blue might have some potential for the mixed office market, but significantly lower, and together they total only about 15 acres. And the olive-shaded parcels you see mostly on the right-hand side of that map may have some potential for smaller neighborhood office, but they're not competing with the regional mixed office market. At the October 30th council hearing, two citizens spoke in support of the amendment, citing traffic concerns if the current plan were followed. And this basically played out again at the planning board hearing. Two people spoke citing concerns about the future of traffic in the area and the amount of development. Carey's land development ordinance includes four criteria that should be considered when evaluating a request to amend the comprehensive plan. In this case, it's that second criteria that catches the attention, whether there are new issues, needs, or opportunities that should be considered. And this, we think, is the land supply issue that we're facing. As we were doing our land supply inventory analysis and realizing that Carey is going to have a lot of challenges with remaining office land in the future, that may affect, is different than the policy assumptions that were made 20 years ago under the plan. So, in developing our recommendations, we consider two things. First, that work on Imagine Carey is already revealing a lack of future office and employment sites, most especially for the mixed office market. Second, it'll take probably another year or so before the traffic patterns in this area settle out and the town gets a real clear picture of where traffic is. And given this, and that the council will review draft employment policies and the draft land supply data at work sessions in just a couple of weeks, staff feels it's premature to amend the plan at this time. In particular, we'd recommend council consider tabling this case for four weeks to allow time for the work session at which you can review employment policies as well as the land supply findings, both of which may help to inform your discussion. So, at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to the planning board chair for his report and he can summarize his findings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, as you can imagine, we had a very vigorous discussion on this particular case. And as was mentioned, we voted seven to one to recommend you approve this request. And I'm going to start with the reasons that we justified for approval and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the one vote and why they did not want to approve it. In favor, we had a point made that there is a limited demand for office in this kind of location right now in the marketplace. And we also cited a very strong neighborhood request that this be residential. They just didn't want office. And we also heard one comment that office contribution in an activity center kind of depends on where it is. If it's in the middle of an activity center, then the office does really support the walkability objective, but if it's way at the edge, maybe less so. And that was a speculation. I'm not sure we have any data on that. We did cite the fact that there would be less traffic impact with a residential, a single-family residential than there would be with an office development. And we also highlighted the fact that there would be a better transition of densities. Right now, there is single-family residential to the north. There is median-density residential to the south. Putting office here kind of puts office right next to single-family residential, which is something we usually try not to do. We usually want a transition of densities. Citing against the request, however, was a comment that commercial properties in the area probably are expecting additional office to support some of their business activities. And there was one member that particularly preferred tabling this case just to get some more data. There was a considerable concern about this effort to understand office mix in activity centers. And frankly, we went around on this and I'm not sure we concluded anything. What I think we did realize is that it's going to be a long time before Imagine Carey has some final results. And I'm not sure even when it does, it's going to give us an answer to this particular question.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Swanstrom? Thank you, Mr. Swanstrom. Mr. Ramich, you completed your comments.
Yes, this concludes our presentation.
I have a question for you. At the intersection of Davis Drive and High House, are those roads at their maximum build-out?
I may have to ask one of the engineers to address that. I know the thoroughfares are at their target.
That's what I'm talking.
But whether or not future turn lanes are improved.
I'm talking about High House and Davis Drive.
I believe that the number of through lanes is probably at its maximum as far as whether we have double left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes that are approached. There may be a few missing in there, but predominantly, we're at a pretty large intersection already.
And the level of service at peak hours now is...
It's probably run level of service E and F. It's a congested area during peak hours of the day.
Okay.
And I believe I know the answer to this, but I just want confirmation. With the change to the CPA, we are in no way impacting connectivity matters as far as having that additional loop road coming through.
Correct. That'll be there regardless of what's going on there. There'll be some connectivity with the Bradford.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I have comments.
Okay.
You know, sometimes citizens will say to us, you guys already have your stuff figured out before you go to the council table. And I'd say this is a good example where we don't because there's some pros on both sides of this issue. The pro for approving this change are twofold. We have a lot of citizens who are concerned about the traffic in the area and they're very interested in having a lower-density use put on this site. The other pro for it are the citizens who say, I live in the area and I really want to stay in the area, but there are no communities in Prestonwood of newer homes. And I'd really like the idea of having a new home adjacent to Prestonwood and that proximity. So, you have some two positives there as far as citizen feedback. Then we have the, on the other side of the issue, we have the bigger picture that we have been grappling with. And really, honestly, and I'm glad we're meeting on February 24th and on March 3rd to talk about this, is that bigger issue of dwindling office space. And the one thing I would say, and I just said this to an applicant yesterday, is that we have very few parcels left that are zoned for office or planned for office. And it just seems like every applicant who comes to us says, I totally get the dilemma you're in and I support keeping office, except for this one parcel here. You know, and we're getting that repeatedly dotted throughout the community. And I think we have a responsibility to consider that dwindling inventory of office. The one comment I would say to P and Z, and this is something that I have dealt with throughout my experience in trying to make these kind of decisions, is we as council members and you as P and Z board members really need to stay away from the conversation about marketability as well as the conversation about profitability. Because sometimes we can get caught up in that. I mean, just looking at the packets that were given to us tonight, we had several pleas based on marketability or profitability. And that is not our primary charge to protect that interest of our property owners. Our primary charge is to protect the overall development and land use of our community. So, I think it's really good for us to kind of back away from that and really say, what is the ultimate, really, the best use? Talking about the transitions and the traffic, that's key because that's what people are concerned about when we look at that big picture. So, with that, I'd really like to hear what everybody has to say about, do we table this as requested by staff until after we get that February 24th and March 3rd work session? Or do we say, hey, this is that place where it's a compelling case to go lower density and move forward?
Yeah. And pro in my two cents, I totally agree with almost everything you said. You make a lot of sense. And I'm the last person that would give up office, but this intersection is beyond capacity as far as traffic and adding more intense use is not the solution. Even though they're talking about a mix of office, I don't think it's too intense. And I think it's a good use. And when you think about, what's the best use? At this stage, this point, I believe low-density houses to feed into Prestonwood, I think that's a great use for that property. So, I agree with you. Comments?
Yeah, well, we'll start at this end. I respect the staff opinions on this. And on paper, it's very hard to argue with your numbers and the logic. That's for sure. But off-paper and on the ground...
On asphalt.
Yeah. To me, it's an easy decision, this one, unlike some of the other ones that we're going to be making tonight. This one is easy. It's a community activity center and the neighboring community doesn't need any more activity.
That's right.
Nor do they need any more traffic at the moment. They're going to get more because Bradford and Seastone are not built out yet, so there's more coming. But in this case, we have a property owner who is requesting to be removed from the activity center, wants to develop their property at a less intense use and a use that's compatible with the immediately adjacent neighborhoods. Frankly, I'm all for it. And I know the work sessions coming up are going to help us, I think, in a lot of ways. And they may help me with some other decisions tonight. I don't think they're going to change my mind on this one. So, I would be prepared to vote in favor of the application tonight.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, not to say anything that both my colleagues have already said or several colleagues have already said, this is a contentious area that had the Bradford come through with a lot of residents who are not happy with not only the way it came through, the way it's been built, and the amount of density. And they're feeling the pain and it's not even totally built out yet. So, it's understandable and I think equity-wise, we've made changes to our plans based on the need to lower density. We've done that at 55 and High House, we've gone with a lower density, right? So, there are changes. Like you said, on the ground is a little bit different than on paper. We also have an interesting concern that I'll just bring up, is that we have a catty-corner area across from there where the Lowe's has left, where we're seeing some flight from that area. And that worries me a bit, that there are many businesses in that area, in the, across Davis and High House that have left. So, we do have opportunity. Not having this be O and I doesn't mean that redevelopment and O and I can't come to this activity center. It's not like everything is filled out and everybody's already there. There's still a lot of space where we could put O and I as that redevelops because they're empty. So, I don't think that removing this is a big deal. It still keeps the numbers within the range. If it went down to 20%, I'd be really concerned, but it's still within the range. It's just on the low end of the range. And I think we do need to consider the neighboring communities and take into consideration their thoughts.
Other comments? Motion?
Well, I'll make a recommendation to approve, I forgot the number of it already.
14CPA06.
Yeah, 14CPA06. Second?
There's a motion and the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ramich. We now move to discussion item 6.3, Dillinger PDD Property Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Ramich will once again present an item and council may take action. Mr. Ramich.
It'll be like deja vu, but it's a little bit different. The site you've just considered, as a preface, went to this, concerned the mixed office market primarily. This one, as we'll see, is a little bit different. So, this is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for approximately 23 acres on Piney Plains Road in southeastern Carey. This is a perspective aerial view looking north, so you can see its relation to the Centrum Shopping Center, crossroads, and US Highway 1 and 64 at the top of the slide. According to Carey's GIS maps, the northernmost reach of Spate Branch sort of bisects the site right down the middle. According to the transportation plan, Piney Plains Road and Dillard Roads, which changed name right in front of the site, are designated as major thoroughfares with four through lanes. The transportation plan also identifies a future collector roadway, Tryon Manor Drive, per city north to south through the site. And that was discussed earlier by some citizens and we can return to that. At present, C-Trans fixed route service is available 700 acres. At present, C-Trans fixed route service is available 700 feet east of the property at Meeting Street and Dillard Drive. Triangle Transit also provides service along Piney Plains Road in front of the property, providing connections directly to Research Triangle Park and downtown Raleigh. Future land use recommendations for the site are given by the Southeast Area Plan. This slide shows the land use recommendations of that plan in vicinity of the subject parcel. The site is part of the Crossroads Regional Activity Center, and the border for Crossroads Regional Center is shown in the bold magenta line, which runs right down the edge of the property. The plan's current recommended land uses for the site are a mix of office, commercial, and medium-density residential uses, with parks and open space or open-spaceland down the middle following Spate Branch. The applicant is requesting that the plan be amended so that the office and commercial portions of the site are re-designated for medium-density residential. Medium-density residential is defined as housing that's either attached or detached anywhere from three to eight units per acre. So that is, the amendment request concerns the, concerns the 15 and 1/2 acres that I've shaded on this map in the magenta color, where basically the question is to retain office and commercial uses on the site, or change it to medium-density residential. This slide compares how the site might develop under the current land use plan and under the proposed amendment. In this case, the current plan yield is taken straight from the approved PDD for Dillinger, and the proposed yield is taken from the rezoning case that's associated with the CPA. The TH stands for townhomes, so under the current plan, you would have 25 townhomes. The rezoning case tracking with this is proposing 110 townhomes. So at the council hearing, council asked staff to perform a comprehensive analysis of all the high and medium-density residential housing currently supporting the crossroads area. The study was undertaken, and the results are given in Appendix A of your staff report. One of the conclusions of that study was that crossroads and Swift Creek Activity Centers, there are two activity centers adjacent to each other, that we really needed to look at the two together when we talked about what medium and high-density residential was supporting those centers. We looked at a 1/2 mile walking distance from the commercial or office portions of the centers. You can see those lines shown there, and we found about, total of about 20 sites that include medium or high-density residential uses. This slide shows the study's final housing tallies for the two activity centers. As you can see, this area has over 3,200 apartment, condo, and townhome dwellings within walking distance, plus 567 hotel rooms. The staff report also provides a full build-out analysis for the crossroads regional center, with and without the plan amendment. In terms of conformance with the housing guidelines for activity centers, overall, we found that the centers were well-supplied with high and medium-density residential housing, taking the whole, the area as a whole. If you look just at the metrics for crossroads regional center, it looks like the housing's at the low end. If you look just at Swift Creek, it looks like the housing's at the high end. You take them together, and it's a well-supplied area. In terms of conformance with the non-residential guidelines for activity centers, overall, we found that the crossroads activity center is somewhat undersupplied with office. With the CPA, if it was approved, the share of non-residential given to office would definitely fall below the minimum recommended amounts for the crossroads regional center. If the CPA were not approved and the plan remained as-is, the share of non-residential space given to office would be just within the minimum recommended range, but we're still kind of struggling within that minimum. And part of this may be due to the fact that there's about three sites within the crossroads center that in the 2000s were changed from office to other uses. So we're, so that's one of the things affecting the market here. And as for the prior case, this is the same slide, just noting that the office market continues to evolve, and it's a very tough thing to get your mind around right now, because it's a, it's a dynamically-changing market. We're trying to figure out what it means with sites abandoned, or going to RTP, or going to Raleigh, and site selection is a big issue right now. Given that, we took a slightly different look at the land inventory for the crossroads area. For the prior case, we said, and we had met, in fact, with the Economic Development Director at the Chamber, and the consensus was that for the Orem property, which you just considered earlier, it had potential, but for the mixed-office market, the kind of people who want to be in walkable mixed-use centers, it wasn't going to compete with the corporate office market. Crossroads is a little bit different. You've got sites here that are competing in two markets. They're, they're both going after the corporate office market and that mixed-use office market. So you have some corporate mixed-use kind of hybrid tenants, like Epic Games, which has grown once and is going to hopefully grow again, and then you've got some staid kind of suburban tenants in there. So it is a different kind of center, so we have a different kind of map. In this case, the dark blue colors you see on the map are what we would consider the prime sites within the crossroads Swift Creek area. You've got about five prime sites altogether. The light blue sites shaded here have some potential to capture office, but they're tough sites, and they're, they're not quite as, as attractive. So at the public hearings, two people spoke at the council hearing for this case, and two people spoke, or one person spoke at the planning board hearing, and both of, in both cases, this was the homeowners association from Tryon Villas Homeowners Association, and they spoke at Public Speaks Out and explained how they had shifted positions, and now the opinion of the HOA is they also are in opposition to this plan amendment. One of the things I would like to address, well, there's two things to address. One is just to make a note that Tryon Manor Drive, its inclusion, or the lack of its inclusion, or whatever, in the comprehensive transportation plan is not up for discussion right now, because this is a plan amendment just to change land use. We did encourage the community to come out to the November community meetings for Imagine Cary, and we got lots of sticky notes, post-its, and comments concerning that drive, and that will be reevaluated with Imagine Cary and the new draft plan you'll get later this summer. So I wanted to note that. The second thing I want to respond to was the office marketability, and we provided a bit of analysis on office marketability in your staff report, because office land operates on a whole different timescale than residential and retail land. And we gave a couple, for instances, in Weston. Weston was created in 1985, 30 years ago, and we just landed MetLife. So you have sites that you may be holding a decade, two decades, or three decades. In crossroads, we landed Epic Games in the mid-2000s. They expanded it five years later and grabbed another site next to them. So it's just, you're operating on a different timeframe. The other thing that's different here is that while we've seen some steady growth, very slow but steady in, in crossroads, at the same time, we've converted some out. There's an apartment complex on Crossroads Boulevard that used to be an office site. Crossroads Ford was 20 years ago going to be an office site, became a retail site. So we've made some changes. The office land is supplied, it's coming down, some of it's being absorbed, and we're left with the four or five sites you see today. And the other thing that makes this competitive in these two markets is proximity to the freeway. Unlike High House Road, this is, all these sites we showed you on the prior map are within a mile of getting on US 1 and 64, or 40, 440, and there's back-road straight connections into Raleigh. So the market here we see as being a little bit different, and it, it's, it's a different beast, and it is a perplexing kind of situation to face. So just like for the prior case, the only new issue really kind of facing us here is that the office supply, the, the available office land supply in Cary is, is in a difficult spot, and it's getting worse as time goes by, and we think, again, it may be worth having a better discussion, a discussion about office supply before taking action. So our staff recommendation is, is the same, lacking some understanding and direction on employment policy and realizing that we're running out of office land. Again, we would recommend one of two things, either to deny the request as being premature at this time, or table it, and you could come back and look at it after you've seen some of the maps, facts, and figures and the draft policies at your work sessions. And again, I'd reiterate that this one we see as being a little bit different. It's because it's going after all the office market, the, these sites and crossroads. It's not a very limited office market that you would have had going after the site. An important one, but a more limited one, you would have gone after the High House Road site. So this concludes my presentation. I'll ask the planning board chair to present their findings.
Well, we worked through two motions on this one. The first motion was an application for approval, or, or a recommendation for approval. And in difference to your previous comments, I'm reporting on what we did as opposed to making this up right now, okay? There was a concern that the property owner's been trying to sell this property for 18 years for office, and the dog hasn't hunted yet, and so maybe the dog isn't going to hunt for office. I'm paraphrasing it, but it was something like that. And again, the comment was made that the activity center targets are kind of arbitrary and don't really focus on the quality of the geographic mixing. This being kind of at the edge of an activity center maybe doesn't support the same objectives that office would be in the middle of an activity center. And we did discuss tabling the request, but we heard that the applicant wanted a, a decision, so we held a vote on that, and it failed, five to three. So we then had a motion to deny, and comes as no surprise, that motion succeeded, five to three as well. And we cited two things that were highlighted in the staff report. One, the need for more office in the activity center, and then a secondary issue that this development looked too dense for the location.
Thank you, Mr. Swanstrom. Mr. Ramich, that's one of the best reports I think I've ever heard. You answer about every question, had all the slides I wanted. I do want you to reiterate one thing for those that are watching here tonight. We're not talking about connectivity, we're not talking about rezoning. This has two pieces to it. One is already medium-density on the plan, and what is in the other one?
Right. This is only about changing 15 and 1/2 acres of commercial and office land to more medium-density residential land.
That's right. So the only thing they can build now, now is commercial and office, and this would be changing it to medium-density is the only thing they can build. That's the question we're answering. Just, I just wanted to set the stage. And I thought you had an excellent slide that really drove it home for me. I think it was 54. If not, it's, I wrote it down, so I might be wrong. That one. That's the one I wanted to see that I asked you to get for me, and I thought that was an excellent coverage of that. We've lost a lot of office in the area, and then at the same time, we can see multifamily creep going down High, not High House Road, Holly Springs Road, with 18 and 19, 17, these are all things that are approved. 18 was not that long ago. Also, on Piney Plains Road, on one side is number seven, and I worry about Piney Plains Road. What will happen if one of the proposals we'll talk about later goes through? What will that do to the remaining property on Piney Plains Road? Brought me up to a higher question or a bigger question, is what is our intention for this area right now? And you gave the data. It's intensive retail, has a lot of multifamily, very little office, and we're running out of office. And that's exactly what I wanted to know, and you nailed it. So that's where I'm feeling about this. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank you, and you answered all the questions I wanted to hear, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Other?
I'll just say I'm in complete agreement with you.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No. Not totally in complete agreement with you. I mean, I too give the applicant credit. They bought into the land use plan 18-whatever years ago, thought that office would be a good use for this property. They've tried to market it for over a decade, and they've gotten nothing. I think that's been pretty patient. I do believe that a lot of our office users are looking for things more on a main highway, good visibility from an interstate, major highway like that. I don't believe that this site has that. One of the slides we talked about, talked to some new type of office. They want it in, what was it? Office arranged in a mixed, in mixed-use centers, arranged in a walkable manner. Tell me what's walkable about crossroads?
Nothing.
Nothing. Nothing whatsoever. Yeah, we talk about, I'm, I'm not done. We talk about available office property left. This kind of seems to exclude, to me, some sites that are going to redevelop in the future. I mean, South Hills is one that comes to mind for me. And quite frankly, I've seen images and conceptual drawings of a vision that include towers. So I think there's something there. That's where I'm coming from. Given that the southern end of the property is already medium-density, losing a little bit of commercial I'm totally thrilled with. Can't say I'm thrilled with losing the office, but I think the medium-density residential is a reasonable alternative.
Other comments?
Well, as easy as the last case was for me, this one is difficult. Been looking at it all different ways. I don't have a serious objection to turning this into all residential, but I see the merits in the existing use as well. If the request were to come in to just change the commercial segment to residential, I mean, that would be a no-brainer, in my opinion. But the, the loss of the office here does trouble me. Certainly, it's a fact, 15, 18 years have gone by and there have been no offers on it. I mean, that, that does say something, but I think we have 15, 18 years ahead of us. So, I mean, I, I don't know at this point. So in my opinion, one of the staff recommendations talked about tabling. I really think these work sessions coming up ahead, especially in this area of town, if we can talk about that, is going to help me. Those work sessions are going to help me make a decision, and, and I would opt for, I feel more comfortable not making a decision, but tabling it this evening, because I'm really torn.
Mr. Robinson, you had a comment?
Yeah, let me just answer Don's question real fast, and I want to answer something to Ed, too.
And answer.
You know, yes, you did. You said, "Tell me what's walkable about crossroads."
Okay.
That's what he said. So I would just say that right around a corner from this area, there are a low strip of restaurants and little shops right there that would be walkable from an office. If, if you worked in an office here, you would be interested in walking right around the sidewalk and to these restaurants. So I just think that there is some walkability. The other thing I'd say is, regardless of whether we're going to get towers somewhere or something, there's different kinds of office, and this might be very well-suited in the future for some kind of suburban office, where it's, you know, a couple, a couple stories, one to two stories, dentist offices and things like that. It's a very nice transition. The one thing I would say to you, Ed, because I went over and took a look at the site, is that this is around the corner from a gas station. That's not a good transition for residential. And I think most applicants would probably want to keep me from going up to Washington, DC, which is where I just came from today. You go up there, and they have plunked down townhomes right next to gas stations, lacking good transitions, and we really need to rely on our planning staff and our record of being good planners to plan and avoid the pitfalls that other communities have done. Putting townhomes next to a gas station, in my opinion, is very inappropriate. I don't think it's a good use at all, and that in itself would drive me away from being interested in changing the comprehensive plan for that little commercial section over to multifamily. I think this is a good location for office. I think we don't need any more townhomes in this immediate area. At the very least, I'd like to table it till after we have this comprehensive discussion, but I'd also be in favor of not approving it.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think a little bit like Ed, there's a lot of good merit. I, I really would like to table to have the discussions on, on office. And I'll tell you, as you were saying, this might be a good suburban. Back years ago in Waverly, we were considering putting some high-rise in there, and the reason is the topography fit. So you could go five stories, and your neighbors would look at it as two stories. And I'm not sure about that topography, but I know there's some severe things. But that may be just the most perfect place for an office that is not just a one-story, but could, could be higher because of the topography and still not impose on the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors. So all that said, I want to have a better sense of how we're going to address our office challenges. challenges before like giving up on something tonight. And again, I don't think I'm as strong as you are on it, but I do, you know, I see, similar to Ed, I see a lot of, and Don, I see a lot of points and counterpoints here. But I'm just not ready. If I am going to do it tonight, I would deny, just, I would rather talk about the offices at our work session and see how it relates to this down the road. That's my personal.
Ms. Bush, anything there?
Nothing to add. I think everyone said it.
The only other thing I'd throw in there since we were talking about walkability and it's pertaining to the site. By the way, there's a greenway that goes around that pond and goes on up to Walnut Street and I run it almost every day.
Oh, wow.
See Jack on it.
Well, what I'm hobbling.
And that goes down to the, goes down to the shopping center. So that part of, I mean, crossroads area does have walkability, but you're exactly right. If you go north of there, you're taking your life in your own hands if you're trying to cross Walnut Street. So it's not safe there, so.
But I do see a lot of argument in what Ms. Jennifer was saying, the walkability. I mean, now you can have, you know, your car service, you can have repairs in that area and we do a lot of walking to get, you know, the shopping done and going to the restaurants there. So we have an opportunity to really refine that site. It kind of evolved eclectic and in a kind of a serendipitous way over the years from, you know, the way back when the Australian company failed. So this is, to me, this is a way to soften those edges and make it a more, a nicer place, nicer place for all.
And after hearing all the comments, I think your suggestion, Ed, is a good one. Let's go through that work session and hash this out a little bit more and see what comes out of that. I think that's a great idea and if you'd like to make that motion.
Sure. I would move that we table 14 CPA 05. Do we need a date to do that? We have our work session the end of February and then there's another one very early March. We have a March 12 meeting.
Right. March 12 would take you after the second work session, so that would be four weeks from today.
So I would say we would table 14 CPA 05 until our March 12 council meeting.
Second.
And there's a motion, a second discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to oppose the motion for the reasons stated and the fact that the surrounding residents actually support the proposed plan. Their issue appears to be with the road.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Mr. Ramich.
You're welcome.
We now move to discussion item 6.4 Soccer Field Lease Agreement with Capital Area Soccer League. Mr. McGrany will present that item and council may take action. Mr. McGrany?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is seeking authorization for the town to renew a soccer field agreement with the Capital Area Soccer League in the form of a lease to cover nine fields, including seven grass fields and the conversion of two grass fields to synthetic turf at Thomas Brooks Park. The proposed lease represents a partnership with Castle that extends back to 1992. As a reminder, Castle, as well as the other soccer clubs that we work with, provide opportunities for both adult and youth league play. And by doing so, the town does not have to offer these high-demand programs in-house. In addition, it is estimated that at least 70% of Castle's participants that utilize Kerry's fields are Kerry residents. And I think this equates to 2,500 to 3,000 kids. I also wanted to point out that the town works with groups in two different ways in allocating our town fields. We have formal agreements like the one we're discussing tonight, which in addition to Castle, we also have an agreement with FC Kerry for the use of fields at Green Hope Elementary. Between these two clubs, 12 fields are used. We also work with groups on hourly rentals. These are allocated over 11 additional fields that the town maintains. This amounts to 4,000 to 5,000 hours in rentals, which equates out to 30 different groups who total these number of hours. And the point here is that we try very hard to seek a balance between these groups as well as the general public in utilizing all the fields, all the town's fields, which are in very high demand. Let's review the lease, or the proposed lease. The town and Castle will enter into an eight-year, six-month lease agreement for the use of nine soccer fields. These include fields at Davis Drive Park, four fields, North Kerry, which has one field, Thomas Brooks, which has two, and then two fields at Preston Fields. The proposed lease covers four different areas: the use of grass fields, the use of artificial turf fields, rental payments, and then a continued assistance on the part of Castle with hosting major tournaments. In terms of grass fields, of the nine fields that Castle will have access to, they agree to maintain seven of these fields as grass fields, while the town agrees to maintain the two artificial turf fields. Maintenance of the grass fields by Castle includes turf maintenance, providing goals, corner flags, and lines. Conversion of the two fields to artificial turf. The town and Castle agree on the conversion of two fields at Thomas Brooks Park to lighted artificial turf fields. Castle and the town will have joint use of the two turf fields for programming. Castle can schedule up to 31 hours of weekly use per turf field during the spring and fall soccer seasons. These hours essentially will be between 4:00 to 8:00, 4:30 to 8:30, their prime time. And this will be the time that Castle will be allowed primary use of these fields. The town will have access at all other times, which will amount to 20 to 30 hours per week. We estimate we'll be able to rent to an additional eight to 10 groups, of which half of these would be adult groups. We also estimate an annual net revenue of $70,200 for the use of these two turf fields. Lastly, the turf fields will allow for public walk-up use when not scheduled. And we estimate on an annual basis that these total 700 hours. And of course, walk-up use is any unstructured group or individual just wanting to use a field without a formal agreement or anything from the town. In the staff report, there's a table that talks about the benefits of having artificial turf fields. The use of a single artificial turf field will more than triple the number of hours as compared to a grass field. This in turn will create opportunities for up to three times as many groups to use the fields. And while the estimated maintenance costs are higher for the artificial turf fields, net profit will be approximately two to three times that of grass fields. I think the point here is that with the conversion of the two fields as part of this agreement, we will be increasing access for Kerry citizens overall. I might also add that this agreement, this, the construction of these two fields is part of a longer-term plan that we've got and that hopefully within five to six years, we'll have four to six fields total turf fields. Sometime hopefully in late spring, staff will be coming back with a bid for the, anywhere from two to three fields as part of the bond project. And so this is part of, my point is this is a part of a much broader effort for us to get fields, artificial turf fields geographically placed throughout town to the west, to the south, and in the center. Rental payments. The conversion of these two fields will cost approximately $2 million. Castle is committed to contribute 75% of the capital cost, up to $1,520,681, in the form of annual rent payments, including interest. The town of Kerry has previously budgeted funding FY14 to cover the remaining 25% of the field construction. Castle has agreed to pay interest on the 1.5 million that the town is fronting, since the town will forego the opportunity to invest funds long-term due to this agreement. Castle is prepared to pay four annual payments of approximately $380,000. In addition, Castle has agreed to pay an annual maintenance fee for use of the turf fields of no more than 20% of the actual cost of maintaining the turf fields or up to $10,000 per the turf field. Final aspect of the agreement is assistance with major tournaments. The proposed agreement with Castle solidifies Castle's commitment towards future NCAA College Cups. In terms of Castle's involvement with the NCAA College Cup, Castle provides substantial staff and volunteers during the event to handle areas such as ticket takers, scoreboard, control staff, ball kids, team escorts, liaisons, halftime entertainment, et cetera. The biggest contribution that Castle makes towards NCAA College Cup is that they include the college cup tickets in the team price of their Castle Showcase Youth Soccer Tournament, which occurs at the same time as the college cup. This results in almost 5,000 tickets being sold on top of the local community attendance. This contribution is the difference in the town having a full stadium, making profits on the event, and being awarded the event for the 10th time in 11 years. If Castle ever decides to not force ticket sales with a youth tournament, it will negatively impact the college cup. In conclusion, staff recommends approval. Our recommendations as listed in the staff report, including authorization of the town manager to enter into an eight-year, six-month lease agreement with Castle, appropriate $1,520,682 budget towards the construction of the turf fields, approval for Castle to make four rental payments of $380,170 beginning August of 2015, and then continued collaboration, cooperation with Castle outlined in the scope of services of the lease agreement. And I will answer any questions.
I'll ask the first question. The only complaint I got about this was, and I know you've answered in your report, but I'm going to simplify it so you can give a simple answer. If we didn't agree to this, would we have more playing time for non-Castle teams, people? Or would we have more playing time with this agreement?
We'll have more playing time with this agreement.
For non-Castle?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Just wanted to make that point. I know that it was made in the staff report. Just wanted to make that clear. Other questions?
Just a follow-up, and that is more playing time for the two turf fields and the seven natural grass turf, or grass fields? Or are we counting the turf fields as so much more public time gained, it offsets what we lose at the grass?
It's more playing time with the turf fields. The same amount with the grass fields. The grass fields, one of the problems with grass fields is a limited amount. I think in the staff report, we talked about 450 hours and we're pushing it up to over 500. And so we're limited and that's the problem we have. I mean, the use that they have pretty much limits any additional use or the fields really start to break down. Did I restate it?
Are citizens going to get to use the seven grass fields any more than they currently do today?
No.
More or less? Yeah, you said basically.
It'll be the same as, they won't.
The same.
Same, the same, not less.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Other questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. McGrany. We now move to item 6.5 Carpenter Park Bid Award and Related Items. Ms. Kuhn will present the item. Council may take action.
Good evening, Council. We have recently bid the Carpenter Park and I have up on the screen the master plan that was approved in 2012 or 2013. And just want to take through a couple of the items this evening that we have listed on the staff report before turning it over to you all for any questions. This is a simpler schematic plan of the plan that we bid. And just to walk through the plan, we have the pond, we have the lawn areas surrounding the pond, we have a restroom building that is near the pond. We also have the parking and circulation areas that are part of this. The playground is included. There's a community garden in the area. We have the sports courts, a basketball court, and pickleball courts at this location. And we have a loop walking trail, three tenths of a mile loop trail is included, as well as trails out to Carpenter Town Lane and to Louis Stevens Drive. There's also would be included, it's not colored here, but we have landscaping around buffers and in areas that would be part of the project. And then some of these other areas, we have some meadow plantings that would be included. A couple of the items that weren't included that were shown on the original master plan includes the trail system that was back in the wooded area over here. You can see we kind of have a stop here and there was ultimately a trail planned out here and looping back around, so we didn't have that included. There also lights on the sports courts were not included. Long-term, the town owns the land on the north side of Morseville Carpenter Road and there was proposed a pedestrian tunnel that was not included as this. Public art was not included and landscaping and some site walls were reduced in this plan. Also in this plan, you can see down here, the, what we had is add alternate three, the memorial location. This was in the master plan and we included it in the bid. And as staff was working on this, we've been working with a nonprofit group for the funding of the memorial. And one of the things as we were starting, originally we were working on flight 3379, but as we were working on it, they became aware of flight 3378 that also crashed in Kerry and they asked if we could include that in the memorial at the same time. So that's one of the items to add that to the MOU agreement that we have. When we brought the plan back a year ago to town council to bring some options, along with the pond as being a major item to be included in here, picnic shelters was one item to be included in here. So we included two sizes of picnic shelters. The smaller one is the medium shelter, which can hold up to four picnic tables. You can see the plans here. And this is similar to in size as one at Sears Farm Road Park and have a picture here of it. This is not a reservable shelter. It's just a first-come, first-served. Can use it for family little gatherings and things. Nice size for that. We also included a, the restroom building, but a larger shelter attached to it. And it was 20 feet by 50 feet, so it could hold up to six picnic tables on that one. And it was intended as a overlook of the pond area. Unfortunately, the bids came back much higher than the consultant's estimates on it, so staff was not recommending to include the larger shelter at this time.
And, excuse me, Mr. Kuhn, is that similar to the one that's at Kids Together Playground?
It had a similar concept where the shelter was near the restroom building. It wasn't quite the same design, but it was similar in that it was adjacent to it.
Is it about the same scale?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, let's see. As I mentioned, we have five items for council consideration. We have the bid award to Fred Smith Company with the base bid and the three alternates for the medium shelter, the memorial, and the basketball pickleball courts, appropriation of $898,000 of general funds to the project, updating the MOU to add the second flight and the additional funding for that, a Duke energy easement, and a name for the park. So with that concludes my presentation and I'll turn it back.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? I know that the only question.
I have a question when you get to it.
Well, I was going to say the only question I have is the name. I don't have a name.
Yeah.
Carpenter Park.
I guess I was just concerned in the options, we were talking about the shelter and a restroom, but on the staff notes, it mentioned that there is a restroom. So if we only have the small shelter, is there a restroom included? And can you bring that up? Because I didn't see that on the plan. All I saw was shelter and restroom.
The shelter, or the restroom is this red square right here. And so it's a standalone. The design for the large shelter was integrated so that it could be, and we bid it as an alternate, so that that part could be separated or it could be part of it. And that's where the image right here, we were showing. So the base bid was just the restroom building, which is this top image. The alternate was added attachment of the shelter on the side of it.
So going back to the previous picture where you have the shelter and a separate bathroom, just so I understand, can you?
Back to the plan.
So they're separated, the shelter is separated by a trail away from the bathroom?
The trail ran between the restroom and the shelter, but it would have been covered by the shelter at that location.
If you're at the shelter, that might not be so bad.
Depends. Well, the reason I'm looking at all this, we have a community garden that's, you know, pretty far away and I just, you know, when you garden, you get all dirty, you want to go wash up. And there, I'm just saying, logistically, I'm not sure that these components work well together on the, you know, on the, on the plan. together on the road, you know, on the, on the plan, right? So if you're gardening, you're filthy, you've got to walk with all your stuff way over there, you know, to a separate standing. I'm not sure if.
We will have water at the community garden location, so there'll be hoses and things at that location to wash your hands.
So they, but it's a separate, so at this point, with the option that's being proposed, it's a separate small shelter and a separate small bathroom?
Right. And the, and the shelter would be adjacent to the playground.
Okay. All right.
Other questions, comments?
My question regarding the request to add the second memorial. Where'd that plane crash?
It was near Lake Crabtree. And I don't know the exact location of it, but I just know it was near Lake Crabtree. The angle of the memorial, one of the monument points towards the original crash site, and the other one points towards the other one. And I just know it's somewhere near Lake Crabtree.
Just don't want this park to be known as, like, the plane crash park. You know, and, or are we tainting one memorial by adding a memorial on top of a memorial? You know, it's.
The Family Assistance Foundation that we're working with actually requested if they could add it as part of this. So it wasn't town staff initiating it, it was them initiating it.
So the people who are affiliated with the first one liked the idea of bringing a second one in?
Yes.
Okay. I think it'd be, I think we might get that image if we had the whole park dotted with different memorials, but having it together makes it a little bit better.
It's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad it's separate from the play area.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think of a memorial as a place of reflection, and you spend some time. I know that I would want it right next to the playground.
The interesting item of the name of the park, staff, I know, stresses over that because they have to put up a sign. Future something.
I like Carpenter Park.
Yeah, Carpenter Park's sign with me, too.
I'm good with that. It reflects the historic nature of the community.
But they just wanted to make sure that we're aware that they need a name.
I like that it honors a family that is here in Cary. I'm not sure who Louis Stevens is, actually. I don't know that he's from our community. I think he's from Durham Community. I think we picked that name because Durham came down with Louis Stevens, and we were going to eventually connect him up.
Oh, so we need to change that name, then?
Commenting on that. But I do like the fact that this is the Carpenter area, and the Carpenter family's been here and invested in this community. I like the name.
Absolutely.
So we read for motion?
Can we get this little box in the corner off the screen?
Oh, you're the only one that has that. What are you talking about? Never mind, he has it. I'll fix it.
Oh, is it just your screen?
It's a display issue.
Okay.
Oh. Yeah, okay, problem solved.
I thought he was changing your park.
He thought that was a new shelter or something. We're the technology people.
I couldn't read the last part of the, the five bullets, and I was.
Does somebody want to give me a motion?
Can you bring the previous screen, or the one with the list up?
Oops. There you go.
So I'll make a motion that we follow the line items for the newly named Carpenter Park to assign the bid award to the Fred Smith Company, associated with the alternates recommended by staff, along with the appropriation of $898,000 of general funds to PR 1144, the MOU for adding the second memorial, and for the already proposed memorial for the two American Eagle flights, and increasing the funding by $10,000, providing the Duke Energy Progress easement, and that the name for the park will be Carpenter Park.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Now move to item 6.6 Bid Award for Stony Brook Estates Water Main Replacement Project. Mr. Brown will present the item. Council may take action. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, council. This item is bid award for a waterline project in the Stony Brook neighborhood. This project will replace over 7,000 feet of aging waterline on Willowbrook Drive, Oak Ridge Road, and a portion of Hampton Valley Road. This will affect about 102 homes, and staff received four bids for this project, and recommends awarding it to Pipeline Utilities Inc. for $1,447,000. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now move to discussion item 6.7 Consideration of License Agreement for Downtown Economic Development. Mr. Boyd will present the item. Council may take action. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, council. The item for your consideration is a one-year license agreement between the town and David Gardner, Alex Ozidzinski, and Whitney Rowe. They're listed individually, but they're working collectively as a group to provide professional advice and consultative services to promote business investments within the downtown improvement district, to include the creation of a business incubator for startup and early-stage businesses, and to help the town identify and coordinate potential public and private actions in the downtown area in exchange for the shared use of Suite 301 in 122 East Chatham Street, which is a town-owned property. Your staff report provides background details, and I'd like to highlight a few of those. It's important to point out that we did establish the Business Improvement District, and we have been using it primarily to incent new construction, but it does provide a larger tool and framework for us to be able to promote business improvements within the downtown area and to coordinate our public and private actions for our downtown revitalization efforts. I think it's very important to realize that as we grow our downtown, as we want to see that strengthen and grow, we want to recruit new companies and businesses. They will drive new investment, and they'll bring new people in our downtown. The Triangle is establishing itself as a significant region for the growth and development of entrepreneurs. Many Cary residents and businesses have contributed to those efforts. We've seen those in Durham, Chapel Hill, Raleigh, and RTP. This agreement shows support for those existing Cary entrepreneurs. It establishes a stronger commitment to these efforts and centers this activity within downtown Cary. The staff report does link to greater detail about the individuals, David Gardner, Alex, and Whitney. They're highly successful individuals who engage in the business of identifying and creating investment opportunities for startup, early-stage businesses, and are experienced in identifying and promoting these investments. They're Cary-based, they're well-respected within the Triangle, and they currently serve as advisor, investor, or both, in more than a dozen companies, to include Fortnite Brewery, Filter Easy, and Undercover Colors. I'd also like to point out just the collaboration with the Cary Chamber on this. Kyle Greer, who's traveling back from New York representing Cary, he and I have been working on this for several months now, and it was a direction with the new position that he felt that we work more collaboratively with the Chamber to think about our downtown efforts, and just want to acknowledge the work that we've been able to do together on that. I would like to highlight just a few components of the agreement. This is a one-year term, designating the non-exclusive use of Suite 301 within 122 East Chatham Street. It will be provided in exchange for specific consultative and business development services from the operators. I wanted to highlight, non-exclusive means that they are not the only users of this space. The town still maintains the ability to use that space for economic development purposes. It's a great space, it's the third floor, and great views when we have folks that come into town looking for redevelopment opportunities. Be great to use that both before or after events, and it allows us to still have that flexibility. Requirements of the operators. They will operate a business incubator for startup, early-stage businesses, giving reasonable preference to Cary residents or businesses desiring to locate in Cary. There is a specific requirement of 50 businesses that they will have to consult, a minimum of that during the year. They will host two events within the Business Improvement District to support the startup community and provide a minimum of eight hours of consultative services per month to the town, and they would furnish the premises. The requirements of the town would be to provide the suite as a move-in-ready space, paint, carpet, lighting, restroom, office and conference room, provide the electricity, water, and HVAC. And then, at a previous council decision, funds for outfit of the second and the third floor had already been appropriated for that. In terms of the fiscal impact, really, the market value for a non-exclusive use of commercial space is relatively low, and the town desires that the space be put to productive use. This license, the town is getting significantly more in return through the value of the consulting services for the support of the new businesses, the introduction of the operators' contacts and the productive use of the space. It's, I've kind of calculated that, the value that they would provide through those services is over $250,000. The fair market value of the non-exclusive use of the space would be approximately $15,000 for this one-year term. Staff would recommend town council to authorize a town manager to enter into an agreement, substantially like the one attached. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I will add that I did talk to Kyle Greer. For those that don't know, he's the Vice President of Economic Development, and he stressed the significance of this move by the town and strongly urged that we would approve the staff's recommendation. Having said that, comments?
Question. The eight hours a month, who tracks that?
I will be tracking that. That will be a piece, that we'll be working on that to make sure that we're following that and keeping score of what's happening. Actually, benchmarks throughout the whole piece. We want to make sure there's a quarterly update. What are the businesses that they're talking to? How are things evolving as well? So we want to really measure that.
And the two special events, can you kind of give me an idea what those might be?
Sure. One example, so David Gardner specifically participated in a Raleigh event that was similar to a shark tank model, like people see on television. He was one of the sharks, and they were giving out real money. So he, being next to a theater, said, why don't we bring that event here rather than host that? So that's one example of an event. The other thing is, too, their efforts that have been happening and new ones that have been taking place in downtown with the innovation, Cary Innovation Center, I think there'll be collaboration that can happen with that. So some things will evolve, but that's one specific example.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, if you'll permit me, I hadn't heard about this type of opportunity before, so as an engineer, I did a little research, right? And I spoke to a number of people, some folks who have done these types of things in Durham, and I talked with some of the council members in Raleigh about what they've done there. And what I learned is that there is real benefit, real tangible benefit, from getting feet on the street, from real connections, for incubators to be an incubator of energy, and for the ability to get people here downtown. We've talked about public-private partnerships as an example of how we need to revitalize downtown, and this is a perfect example of where our public, along with their private energy and their experience, could really make a difference. One of the things that I learned was that HQ Raleigh outgrew their space when they started doing an incubator in two months. They had so much interest. They have, they ended up tripling the amount of space and had 100 companies on the waiting list. Durham, when they had a space that was subsidized, for the first year, it was subsidized, but now it's on its own, and their metrics have shown that it's advantageous. Incubators have to be affordable. It's the only way people can start up a business. And this lease agreement that you all came up with is truly innovative. I love the idea. It really creates a sense of community and belonging to the area, and getting people downtown is going to allow for, what I've heard the term three or four times called beneficial collisions, where people of like-mindedness, who want to start a company, who have services to offer, as we've seen in the heart of Cary and the Cary Chamber, can really provide added value to each other in a concentrated area. So I think that personally, from what I heard from my investigation with a variety of folks, that this is a really innovative opportunity. It's a way to put our feet on the ground with a public-private space. It was, as Mr. Henshaw said, it was one of the key requirements out of the Technology Task Force, and combined with everything else, and the potential of getting Google Fiber downtown, I think it's going to be a real shot in the arm to the area. I'd love to see this happen.
Other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
My only comment would be, the first time we were hit with this, I had some pretty serious concerns, didn't think it was a good deal. I think that staff, and I don't think I was the only one that had some of those concerns. I think staff took some of that feedback and went back to the Chamber and these folks and kind of, I guess, put together a better deal, where they're actually requesting consulting services to the town that does have value. So you could either be paying for those consulting services or renting out this space to somebody else and get less value in return for that. So I will support it. I'm optimistic that it works out. I just, we'll see how it goes. Best of luck.
Got a year, is that what you're saying?
Tick-tock, tick-tock.
Love it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our last discussion item, item 6.8 zoning request for the Keller property. Is there a motion to remove this item from the table before we begin?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approved. We've moved it from the table. Staff's going to get this report. We've already heard from the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation for approval. The protest petition filed in this action is still valid. That means it will require five affirmative votes out of six to approve this request. Council may take action tonight. It's granted.
Thank you. I'll just briefly go through the slides. This is 13.31 acres located on Stevens Road. The land use plan designation is medium-density residential. Small portion of the property is parks and open space. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. When you saw this previously, it was residential multifamily, and the applicant has reduced the category since they are proposing townhomes. There is still a valid protest petition. Several protesters have dropped their petitions, but there's still approximately 11% of the area that constitutes a valid protest. Since you saw this last, the use being limited to townhomes and neighborhood recreation has remained the same. The applicant has reduced the number of dwelling units from 80 to 70, and thus reduced the density from six dwelling units per acre to 5.2 dwelling units per acre. The attenuation to a 25-year storm event remains the same. The previously offered condition that all units shall have a garage and no more than 14 shall be a one-car garage remains the same. There's still a 40-foot wide Type A buffer offered along Stevens Road, which exceeds the ordinance standards. The applicant previously offered 5,000 square feet of contiguous, contiguous open space, which shall include a playground or a covered structure. Council asked for an exhibit demonstrating what 5,000 square feet look like. Since then, the applicant's offered a 6,000-square-foot area. Looked for a location that you would be familiar with, and this is the green area behind the Page Walker Arts and History Center.
Thank you.
So if you look at just the grassy area, that's about 4,500 square feet. If you add into it the covered stage area and the fountain, and a little bit of sidewalk, that's approximately 6,000 square feet.
That's nice. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. The applicant's also offered a condition to provide masonry material that exceeds the ordinance requirement of 35% to 40%. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for your questions.
Very good. I stated last time, and I'm going to go ahead and state it again and get out of the way and let you guys have the discussion. I strongly oppose this mainly because of the use. The only thing I'll add from my comments from before is, as mentioned earlier tonight, about the character of Stevens Road, and it is residential in character. And we have to, I think, consider that. And I don't think that this is the best use for this property for reasons I've already mentioned, but add to that the character in this area, and if you lose the character of Stevens Road, I think you'll see a domino effect.
Road, I think you'll see a domino effect, excuse me, down Piney Plains Road and other areas, other places in this area. So those are my main concerns. I haven't changed my mind. I oppose this, and so I'm willing and eager to hear what my colleagues have to say about this.
Jack, it's your district. Do you want to go first?
No, I just want a question for clarification on the protest petition. That is, is that one lot or is that several lots?
There's several lots. Well, let me pull this slide back up. So the parcels in yellow, there's two, three, four, four, single-family or detached residential lots, and then the common open space with the homeowners association property.
Okay, now the common open spaces, is that considered a protest there from the homeowners association? That's what I'm really getting at. I want to understand what the impact is of a homeowners association. I didn't realize.
It's a challenging situation. There were two signatures on the protest petition from the homeowners association, the president and the secretary. Since that time, the president at that time withdrew the protest petition for his parcel of land. It's, there's been some debate about the validity of it, but we had to accept it at face value when we received it. And we did not receive a signature from both property owners or both representatives of the homeowners association. So there was some concern about whether or not the entire neighborhood was protesting. As you can see, there's a number of homes in the neighborhood that did not submit a protest petition. But there are still four individual parcels that did.
Would they have made up a valid protest petition without the homeowners' commentary?
Probably, I don't have the math to be able to do that. I'd have to go back and look at the calculations.
The current, I remember a number of 13%. Is that right? Anybody here?
Right now, we're at 11%.
11%, okay.
Do you have the concerns that were expressed on those homeowners, on those protest petitions? Do you happen to have that, where you can relay that right now?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you have the arguments for the protest petition? I just, I'm sure we heard them during the public hearing, but I just want to go on record of those be noted.
This was what was presented at the initial public hearing. Traffic density, road design and future improvements, streetscape buffer width, stormwater management, environmental impacts, and then the use itself. So some of the, some of the conditions offered by the applicant have changed since this was initially presented.
Well, I appreciate you letting me go first. I can tell you that I've struggled with this both ways because I think, as we heard in the public hearing, the, in the community, there are those that see the value of it and those that have a concern. And I, there seemed to be a telephone campaign going on today, and I, that's fine. And I had an opportunity to talk to many people. And the main point that I was trying to convey to them is, you know, be succinct in your concern and be factual. And, you know, I think the developer has made a great effort in addressing some of the things. We asked for the increase in the play area. We asked for a reduction. We also asked, they're also providing a 25-year attenuation for stormwater. So, you know, I want to give credit where credit is due. And I think sadly, I think the struggle we have is in getting mired in those specific things, which by the way, you know, I think it's going to be difficult to address the traffic density, which is why those were not pulled. But I think, you know, Mayor, you were hitting on a little bit of it, and that is, the area is under siege and we're just looking at what's within Cary's control. And half a mile away from there, or a mile away from there, you've got the beginning of the Raleigh, very intense multifamily. So it is an area, and we've just seen the impact of that with the apartments on Tryon and Cary Parkway. So I think, I go back and forth between looking at the improvements made bit by bit or stepping back and saying, is this really just too intense for the area? And my feeling is that, you know, some of the points that you may, Mayor, I think, are the trump cards, you know, from my perspective, so.
I'll make a comment. I agree with both of you. I have been looking at this, and just as kind of a side note and also in follow-up what I was saying earlier, I've been rereading our LDO authority for rezoning to kind of refresh my familiarity with it. And the opening paragraph, I think, is one that we need to remember. It says, "The purpose of rezoning is not to relieve particular hardships nor to confer special privileges or rights on any person, but to make adjustments to the zoning map that are necessary in light of changed conditions or changes in public policy or that are necessary to advance the general welfare of the town." So when I look at some of these proposals that we're getting through that lens, you know, when we talk about marketability for a landowner's, you know, for land, that's exactly what it says that we're not supposed to be doing. When it talks about profitability for somebody, that's exactly what it says we're not supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be saying, is this the best for our community? I had the opportunity to see what a site layout might look like, not necessarily would look like, but might look like, under the conditions that we have presented here. And in my opinion is, it is just too dense. And one thing that was demonstrated on the site plan is where you have a row of townhomes that backs up to a row of townhomes. And it is my belief, when you are to that point where you have these very small backyards with people looking into each other's homes, we have crossed the line of being too dense. And I just really think this is not the best use for this land.
Comments from this end?
Although, I guess I'll make a few comments. I think that one of the things we're struggling with here, and hopefully we'll get some of this Imagine Cary results coming soon, is our, the variety of housing stock that we have available for so many of our citizens and people who want to live here. It's just not there. And although I absolutely appreciate that, Ms. Robinson, what you said about, you know, townhomes backing up to other townhomes, that doesn't necessarily, not everybody cares about that. A lot of people don't care about having a big yard. So there are people who bought, like in Carpenter Park, et cetera, where you do have townhomes backed up to townhomes. And there are a lot of people who like that kind of community. And I would hate to put my personal feeling about what I want to live in on someone else. I do see that, that this could be a nice community. My biggest concern with what's going on here is not necessarily whether it's too dense or not, because I do think that there's a lot of value add that this developer has brought to not only improve this site, but also some of the downstream sites that they're suffering with in Wellington, is this piecemeal thing that we struggle with and we continue to struggle with, with the infill, right? Even at 120 homes or 100 homes, townhomes that it was originally brought in, it was only going to be, I think, 65 trips. So it wasn't going to kick off a transportation or a TIA. And the one before that wasn't enough to click it off. And we've got all these small ones in here so that the aggregate problem of all these little infills is that we could potentially have this traffic impact that so many of these folks are worried about. And they absolutely have the right to be worried about it. But we don't have a plan in place to address that unless we, as a council, determine that, you know, we need to figure out another way to address these kinds of things. But what's happening here is going to happen all across Cary. And I understand the concern of absolutely all of the folks, the Prestwick folks, et cetera, with respect to traffic. I understand why they're concerned because it just seems like it's a buildup. But I didn't have the, you know, I guess the, whoa, this is too dense problem here because I do think a variety of housing stock would be nice. And I, I like the communities. I think it's a transition from the single-family homes, and I can see it being a really nice neighborhood. I don't like to have these islands of huge homes and then another island of very dense. I think that there's some value to, I think the lovely lady said, we're all neighbors. We need to, you know, be appreciative of the fact that we can all get along and work together. So I don't have a problem with that, but I do see some of the issues that could potentially be addressed with respect to the traffic impacts.
Mr. Smith?
Laurie, if I can ask you a question. I mean, that came up, I heard it at the public hearing about, you know, the need for that. And I don't have the data if the need is townhome or multifamily. But like within the three miles is thousands and thousands of them. So I really didn't give that, just so you understand where my head was coming, I just didn't give that weight that, you know, I just didn't think that was an impactful statement because I do think part of the problem we're dealing with over there is that we have too much of that.
I understand.
So I'm just giving you that perspective.
Good, good input.
Mr. Yeho?
Well, it sounds like we have two no votes at least coming up, so maybe everything else is not necessary. But I was prepared to approve this this morning. We asked for a reduction in density. We got it. We asked for an increase in the recreation space. We got it. It exceeds buffer requirements, masonry requirements. And while I'm not the expert here, I'm told that it could certainly improve the stormwater issue that they presently have in that area. So there's a lot of good things. And I'm usually more sympathetic, I guess, to protest petitions than this one, but I just looked at this, tried to look at this without thinking about a protest petition or anything else, and I came down on the side of wanting to approve it. The plan we have in place, it would be nice. And one lady said, why can't we rezone everything at once? And that would be wonderful if we had the ability to do that and we knew what was going to happen next to it and across the street and it, that would be great. We don't have that, you know, and we never have that luxury. But we do have the Southeast Area Plan, and it calls for medium-density residential. This falls right in the middle of the medium-density, three to eight. It's about five, I guess, per acre. So, you know, I didn't have that heartburn about the density. But I certainly understand your concerns, and it's not a plan I'm wedded to in any way, but I certainly feel that it at least deserved my support.
Just a point you made, I think I heard otherwise. Anyone can, anyone can rezone any property. The danger is if you devalue someone's property, then that might-
That's true.
-create legal-
Technicality there, but that obviously is true.
Yes. So, other comments, questions?
I mean, I guess there's a process question. I count three to three, so.
It's five to approve. So either way, there's a motion to approve and it fails, then we're done. If there's a motion to deny and it's approved, we're done. If there's a motion to deny and it fails, then we're waiting for a motion to approve and that will fail. So either way, we're going to get there.
Gotcha.
So it doesn't matter which motion comes first.
I can offer my comments real quick, just so they're on the record. This isn't one that I think you're all warm, fuzzy about. Definitely has some, you know, it's a little problematic here and there, but it's also a lot of positives with it. But I think first, I would like to thank all the residents and the applicant and everybody that have spent so much time and angst on working on this, trying to come up with something that everybody could be satisfied with. And I think when you look at a lot of the protests that have since been removed, I think there's been a lot of progress made there. We don't get to see that a lot, and I just, it kind of speaks volumes to me. The density argument, I mean, this thing started out at over 120, it's down to 70. But for some, if it came down to 50, that'd be okay. I don't see 20 units making a hill of beans one way or the other. I really don't. I mean, the senior housing, yeah, okay, but, you know, there's no restrictions on who can buy this. I mean, anybody could go in there. So I don't know that's a valid one that swings me one way or the other. But I do appreciate it. I think it does provide a reasonable transition. I was very pleased with the stormwater upgrades to not only address this site, but also Prestwick and Wellington. I think Wellington's been dealing with this issue for a long time and would love to see some relief. P&amp;Z supported it seven to one before even the changes were made to, you know, get it where it is now. I mean, that does tell me something. There was a gentleman that spoke earlier about job creation. I don't vote for projects to create construction jobs. I don't approve projects for tax base. I actually kind of like urban sprawl. People talk about it like it's a bad thing. To me, urban sprawl is single-family neighborhoods with cul-de-sacs and everybody gets their own little bit of open space and it's yay. Some time in the last 10, 15 years, that became a bad thing, and I just don't get that at all. But, so, I'm cool with sprawl. I'd vote for it. I really would. I think from where this thing started to where it is now, I think it's a significantly improved project. Are there issues on Stevens Road? They will be, there will be improvements made over time as properties are developed. You know, we kind of, we used to have rules that required people to do more road improvements until those powers were taken away from municipalities. So I can sympathize with folks there. I would encourage people to contact their state legislature and tell them that was a dumb idea. So that's where I'm at.
One thing to add for those that are here that might not know this. We did a study a few years back, I don't know if you remember this, Jack Smith, about the stormwater issues that they're facing in Wellington, and there were several factors that came into play. One, the houses were built when there were lesser standards, so some of them are platted in floodplains. Two, the North Carolina Department of Transportation doesn't have to adhere by any of our rules, and when they widen US-1, all that water came that way and there was nothing we could do about it. And so when developers like this one come in and propose development, they're actually going to make it better if it was developed. So you're exactly right about that. They would have helped make that stormwater situation. So until, and I know it sounds counterintuitive, but until properties develop east of Wellington, they're going to continue to have stormwater issues. And once those properties develop, it will help. But again, from what I remember from staff, there's water coming under US-1 that's going to continue to cause problems in Wellington, no matter what happens east. And this is all for me, so I hope I got it right. I hope I haven't forgot a lot in the last two years. Anyway, that's stormwater. We need a motion to approve or deny. Either way, we'll get there. We just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion. We need a show of hands on this one. All in favor of a motion to approve, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? No. Motion fails three to three. Thank you. We also need a motion for comprehensive-
It's not relevant.
No, it's not relevant.
I thought there's a piece that if you deny, there's a section, it's what the staff report says.
Consistency.
If denied, trying to find it. Option B, recommended rezoning is denied.
But Mayor, wasn't it three to three?
Yes.
But it's-
But it needs-
But it needs the supermajority.
Not to deny, just to approve. It requires a supermajority.
Nobody made a motion to deny.
We made a motion to approve.
They made a motion to approve and it failed.
All right, I'm sorry. Yes, I was listening. That's right. It's failed.
Okay. So the way I understand the staff report is there's a recommended comprehensive consistency statement that needs to be, a motion that needs to be made for denial. That's what the staff report says, option B. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Let me see what you're referring to, Mayor.
If you click on the staff report, option B. If you click on the staff report, option B. I can read it if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. Based on information presented at the public hearing and by the applicant, and based on the recommendations and detailed information developed by the staff and planning zoning board, continued the staff report, and considered criteria of section 3.1, 3.4.1 of the Kerry, Town of Kerry Land Development Ordinance, denial of rezoning 14 RZ23 is reasonable and in the public interest because, among other reasons, the proposed rezoning does not correct an error or meet the challenge of some changing condition, trend, or fact.
And that's fine.
Okay. So could we get a motion?
That was, oh, was that your motion?
Am I allowed to make a motion? I made that in form of a motion.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Really? Second.
We're going to be here a while. There's a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
So the motion fails three-three, so where are we with the consistency and reasonable statement?
I think we need a, we probably need a consistency statement. Perhaps we could read the other one and see how, take the other alternative.
I might want to take a shot at that one, that's option A. That will fail as well, probably.
Right.
Where's that other council member we said we never need?
You're the one.
We really didn't need it for the rezoning, it's just this absurdity.
Is it possible to table this particular item while staff has a chance to go off and find out what the legal way of handling this is?
Would that be your recommendation, Ms. Simpson?
Why don't we do that? And why don't we table the consistency statement till next council meeting, even?
Okay, is there a motion to do that?
So move, leave through.
There's a motion to table-
Second.
-to the next council meeting and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yay. All right, that gets us through our discussion items. Is there a motion to take us into closed session?
Oh, sorry. Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, and 5, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for acquisition of properties owned by North Star Partners LLC located at 31 Kilmain Drive, Kerry, North Carolina 27511, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143, 318, 10E.
Second.
Is the motion second, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.
Do you want this to fail? I know.